And no longer holding us harmless by giving a state aid beyond what the funding formula would do. We have a $33 million problem with the budget over the next two, four, five, six years. That clearly defines who we are going to be and how we are going to operate. The S2 bill will take us to the funding formula that was adopted and applied in 2008, which if you took that funding formula and applied it to currently what the district is, the state is telling us you should have a budget of around $46 million. So that's a reduction right there. But in telling us that we would have a budget of $46 million, they're also telling us the local revenue for our budget should be $17 million of that $45, $46 million. Our local revenue is currently $7 million. We can clearly, I mean, there's not going to be an opportunity to be going to the state and making a case much when we're that far behind in terms of local revenue. Same point is though, personally I'll say I'm not a proponent of just having people get their tax bills in 11 months from now and be shocked that we need to... Certainly there's going to have to be a revenue increase this year, but my suggestions are, one, administration and board has to meet with the city, make them clearly aware of that issue, start talking about issues like pilots, other revenue streams that might be available. Make them aware that it's part of their issue as well if in fact residents of Asbury are going to be looking at tax increases of this nature. Would also suggest to the administration that in light of this now, looking at that number, we have to stop the year by year can we balance the budget? And have more discussions and have the administration present more of a three-year plan of what we can look like and how we would fund what we look like. And third, going back to my previous statement, I think we, whether administration or board, however we like to do it, begin to educate the public as to this is where we are. I don't know about you guys, but I really don't get... I mean, it's taken me a while to get my head around the depth of the problem and about 17 conversations with Jeff to really see it's this big. But you don't really hear this at the grocery store or anywhere. Barb did provide the article, I guess. Adam, we do have eight districts currently suing for changes in the formula. So it's not like something might happen to assist us over time, but I think it's time to really put this at the top of the list. If this is the most important, it should be taking up more of our time to discuss. And when you're talking about a balance between revenue and cuts and that sort of thing, you know, to present our opinions to the monitor and the administration. Everybody could have a different opinion of what you think that is. And so I think there needs to be time, and I don't know how or when you want to do it, Madam President, to begin to engage people, to say how are they feeling about, you know, what it's going to be and probably getting more specific information. Jeff, I think you threw out a number to me at some point, what currently with the municipality. And again, we can talk to them about their growth and what commercial growth is going to be, how the tax base is growing. It did grow this year, but I think in my discussions with them and calculating, growth in the tax base will cover about $250,000 of additional revenue before our taxes would go up. But giving everyone a sense of an increase of this much revenue is how much of an increase on, you know, $100,000 of value in a property kind of thing. So needless to say, the Finance Committee ran a little long. And we had those discussions and you can see that in the minutes. You know, we can also continue to talk and engage our legislators from the workshops I attended, from my readings of State Senator Sweeney. He's pretty much sticking with S2 with the argument that people should have been planning for this and that districts could consolidate. Hard to imagine how we can take a lead and go to a district and say, "Hi Board, will you dissolve and become part of us?" So I think we'd need some state assistance on that if that were going to occur. So lots of outliers out there as possibilities, but we need to focus on, I think, us as a municipality and a district and what we're going to do moving forward. Beyond that, just pointing out, and I think it's going to happen tonight, the auditors are going to present, so there was a discussion there.
It's tough to swallow, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Kevin Frengier, the partner from Holman Frengier Allison, who conducted our annual audit, will be here at 7:00 to present to the board the results of the audit ending June 30, 2018. So he'll present some information to you. And then we have a corrective action plan to approve as well. So we'll need to accept the audit and accept and approve the corrective action plan.
And I mean, my understanding was as you look at the corrective action plan for the audit, it's really nothing of major significance. There's things they identified, we will respond to them again. I will start harping on, we need to keep our eye on the $33 million ball. And that's what's going to be critical.
Mr. Lauteraka, you being the Chair of Finance, perhaps you could schedule a meeting with Madam Vice President, Madam Superintendent, State Monitor, and of course, Mr. Hastings, so that we can begin putting a plan together where we would be able to educate the public. We could possibly do that during our town hall meetings. But if we could get, you could put a date together?
Sure, I'll do that.
And then that way we could discuss that with you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your...
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Is the city authorities anywhere aware of this problem?
Yes, there's been an initial meeting with the city. I don't believe at that time the $33 million number was communicated. But from S2, knowing that state aid was going away, we were talking about a $20 million cut. And we talked a little bit about pilots. And that's where I got the figure from which I could compute how much is our tax base growing. As I understand, a part of the problem is when they look at a municipality should be kicking in $17 million, they don't take into account the amount of commercial activity that's under a pilot. And under a pilot, the school district's getting no money. And then Barb has brought up the issue. We're not exactly sure. There's questions to ask the city about revenue and whether there is any tax revenue coming from the development that's to some degree state subsidized development in town? And what can we count on there and those sorts of things?
I just wanted to add something if I may. The lawsuit that the school districts are conducting against their financial woes also. People have to realize when we communicate to our community is it's not an Asbury Park or urban issue. Districts such as Freehold Regional and Tom's River are also experiencing things like this. So, you know, a lot of people will say, "Oh, it's, you know, Asbury Park." But, you know, it's far reaching. It's not just certain types of school districts.
Thank you, Mr. Lauteraka. Mr. Pinkney, curriculum?
At our curriculum meeting, we discussed grant approval for a couple of programs, one being PSCG, Foundation Sustainable Jersey, the other one Ocean First Foundation. Also spoke about Monmouth University's Right One Sports Summer Program. And discussed some approval for conferences, trainings and seminars for certain individuals in a district. We also spoke about Asbury Park High School to partner with Thurgood Marshall Elementary in a Project Passion mentoring program. Spoke about approval for a basketball game between Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School's sports basketball team and Asbury Park Police. Community outreach, registration kickoff events. And also Thurgood Elementary to partner with Microsoft on their professional development initiative. And also we spoke about class trips. And that's it.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Ms. Lizinski?
As you can see, there's an addenda to the board agenda. And I know that everybody hasn't had an opportunity to look through the policies that were attached, but most of them are mandated. And some are revisions of mandated policies we already have. So we need to adopt them. So if you get a chance before the second reading, take a look. There's a couple where there were choices and those choices are suggested by the committee. And I'm sure the administration went through it too and approved the choices. Also a second reading, well, first reading on sustainability. We have a new sustainability policy that we're introducing. And the apparel and branding policy had additional information on it. So it's new again because of the color codes that are being used for the logos. So take a look at that. And then there's a second reading on the physical education policy. And that's it.
Any questions? Ms. Breach?
Good evening. On our Athletic Committee meeting, we originally had Mr. Hayes that was scheduled to speak. Just briefly, they had come to us earlier, the distinguished alumni. They want to have a distinguished Athletic Hall of Fame to subsidize the distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. He wasn't able to attend the meeting, so that will take place at the next meeting. We also spoke about the Title IX update. We were given a copy of the audit from Shore Regional. We're going to go over that and hopefully next month, two months, be able to have a Title IX update with our school sports programs. The Athletic Banquet has been scheduled for June 4th. It's for all our high school grade level athletes. We do not have a speaker yet. We were hoping to obtain Mr. Parker, who was there during the presentation for our girls' basketball undefeated team. We have not received word back from Mr. Parker as of yet. The homecoming date we were talking about, the original date is scheduled for Friday, the October 18th. We're going to put a questionnaire out to the students and to see whether or not they'd be interested in moving it to Saturday. I was, some people have spoken to me in the past couple of years, so maybe move it to Saturday afternoon as it was in the past in hopes to get more attendance for the parade and also for the game and some more alumni. That has not been established. We don't know. We're going to wait and hear back. Hopefully next month, we should have a date for sure if it's going to be that Friday night or the Saturday afternoon. And then we're also, we're waiting to hear back for the official unveiling of the plaques to honor Mr. Bruno and Mr. Bud. Tentatively, Mr. Bud's plaque will be unveiled at the Bud Games, weather permitting. And we have yet to set a date for Mr. Bruno's unveiling. But when we do, we'll make sure everyone knows that. We have to speed on that. That's pretty much it for now.
Are there any questions?
Okay. I have the buildings and grounds. There were no facilities requests for the renovations at 9:10. The city received the traffic study, but they need to, no. The city needs more time to study the submitted traffic study. There will be a hearing on March 25th. The district has also submitted an application for the high school to be assigned the Bronze Status for the Sustainable New Jersey. We have continued to discuss financing or bonding options related to energy savings projects. I keep saying, it's bothering me now. That's pretty much it. And we've scheduled our walkthrough for the high school. The high school for next week, I think it is. Mr. Lauteraka, remember the day? Remember the day? I think it's 10 o'clock on, which day? Tuesday? On Tuesday at 10 o'clock. So the, we have, after that, we'll only have Bradley School remaining on this cycle of walkthroughs and then we'll start again. Okay, we have no public, so we're going to skip the public participation part. Now we're going to review our regular agenda items.
Ms. Gray?
Good evening, Board members, Madam President, Madam Vice President. Upon review of the agenda, are there any questions related to items, any items on page B1?
I had a question. I saw there's a couple new positions and replacing some individuals that have either left a district or retired. I was wondering how the district administration in the future is going to handle new positions and replacing people in lieu of our fiscal situation that's going to be coming down the pike and exists right now.
Okay, I'm not certain which, when you make reference to new positions.
It says that two teacher aides are new, E and F.
So those positions are governed and dictated by code and statute and student need, right? And so as student needs change, one of what we, one of the things that we have to be mindful of, regardless of budgetary constraints, we have to be in compliance.
So this has to do with the student, the teacher aide is for a particular student?
Yes, there are very specific reasons why students need teacher aides. And we have to always be in compliance. Otherwise we'll have a bigger issue.
I think what threw me is the teacher aide, not for the job description title, that's all.
Any questions, B2? B3? B4? B5? B6? B7? B8?
I have a question, B7. Are we going to go in executive about number 8?
I'm sorry, please.
Are we going to go into executive session quickly, just to review number 8? So I understand what that was about.
That's not something we'll be able to go into closed session and discuss tonight. B8? Any questions on B9?
Should we table B7, number 8 then?
We, no. We'll talk, we can speak during the break, but that's not an item that we can see.
And the reason, Ms. Lizinski, why we can't go into closed about that particular item is because the employee has not been rice for this evening. But I'm happy to talk to you about it during the break.
B9? B10? Lastly, B11?
I have a question.
Yes.
Reference to number 7 on B11?
Yes.
Do we have a decision how we're going to select the three board members to attend that? I mean, I, you know, curious.
So as you see, this is a conference that will be taking place in Philly. It is open to three. So actually, the President and Vice President will be attending. And then that opens, leaves it open for one.
I understand that Ms. Antienne is the one who expressed an interest for a particular topic of this conference. So I would suggest just sending her, because we have to be mindful of expenses now, you know, about going to national conferences. We do spend a lot of money on national conferences. I don't have a, my own opinion is I think Ms. Antienne should go. She hadn't expressed a certain topic. But having board members travel around the United States, maybe we should stop. We've halted it before because of fiscal issues. It's just a thought. And the same people going all the time, we should open it up to other board members if they're available.
Okay, well, that concludes the section that I was reviewing.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'd be happy to entertain any questions on items C1 through C5. But I'd like to point out on C1, item 4, which is, as we mentioned earlier, the adoption and acceptance of our annual audit in the corrective action plan. And on page C2, item 6, there are four donations there from various community members to items to the district.
Madam President, I have a question. It's for Mr. Hastings, the adjustments. I had some question, I'm sorry. It's C2, the adjustments, the attachment.
Oh, okay.
For the finances, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to call. Got this late and didn't have an opportunity. What does a covered personal relocation mean? There's quite a few transfers under that title.
That's when we have to fix the payroll to reflect, like you were budgeted at Thurgood, but they moved you to Bradley September, but we already budgeted you for Thurgood. So I just have to make sure that you, your monies went to the school that you're at.
Okay, I have two other questions. What's SWC reallocation? Or relocation?
It's the C2 attachment. I just, you know, I questioned because we're doing a lot of transfers right now.
Yes, so we did get some carryover money into Title 1, which was allocated to the schools. And by allocating it to the schools, it reduced the contribution that the general fund makes to fund the schools. So those funds were reallocated out of that line where you see the 10-000-520 account. And we reallocated those for various expenses in the general fund.
Somebody had a lot of work to do, doing these transfers.
Can I, can I go back to B1, B2? We're doing the, an internal hire for Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I was at that committee, are we covering the individual's current job with a current employee then, or were we? Oh, it's in the addendum? I'm sorry.
Yes, on the addenda.
Never mind.
Any questions for Mr. Hastings? Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes, sorry. Okay, our superintendent wants to make additional comments? Withdraw the motion, is that what we do? Okay, never mind. Okay, being adjourned.
Good evening. How are you? We had snow yesterday and sunshine today, crazy weather, right? We appreciate you being here this evening. In accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975, C231 S1, amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lauteraka, Ms. Lizinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Antienne, Ms. Chavez Anderson.
Madam Superintendent, we have a presentation.
Yes, good evening. We have two presentations tonight. One is from our auditing firm, as well as an additional presentation regarding the scholarship opportunities that four of our students from Asbury Park High School have received. And before we get to the presentation, I just want to lend a little context for the second presentation that I mentioned. We are known as an innovative district because we have very out of the box programming. Right before our board meeting, we were at the middle school, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, where there was a celebration of the Project Ghana Project. The Project Ghana Project is a video conferencing project that we have where we have students. The Project Ghana Project is a video conferencing project that we have, where we have students, secondary level, grade six to 12, over in Abremagona in Ghana, Africa, that our students regularly interact with and interface with. Our teachers are their teachers and vice versa, so we have a wonderful reciprocal relationship. In that presentation that I just came from, the students in Ghana drew some parallels to the most recent Marvel Comics movie, The Black Panther. One character in particular in this movie, Shuri, was really, really, really impactful in terms of the contribution of technology, and in particular, for blacks in technology. I am so delighted that we have individuals that are local in our community that felt it was urgent, they see a sense of urgency around ensuring that regardless of our students' zip codes or children's zip codes, that they should have access to quality coding and robotics and technology and be leaders in the forefront of that. And so as a result, tonight, I'm so delighted that we have with us the owner of Plumworks. Let me, let me, let me make sure I get it right, because I, I kind of just get goosebumps when I just think about how impactful the work of individuals are, but when they come together collectively, pool their resources and pool their efforts together, the magnitude and the depth and breadth of it, and what it means for our students. So I'm delighted that we have four students from the Asbury Park School District, uh, High School, and Ms. Kathy Baumgartner, Principal Baumgartner, is with us, one of our supervisors of Curriculum and Instruction, Janice Kroposki, is also with us, and they've been very instrumental behind the scenes in working with the Jersey Shore Women in Technology Organization. The Jersey Shore Women in Technology Organization, grassroots, and very focused and committed to ensuring that students have access to coding and robotics regardless of their zip code. I want to thank them tonight because I don't know if it would start out in the kitchen over a cup of coffee exactly what the genesis of your organization is, but the fact that you see something in our students that's worthy of your conversations outside amongst yourselves, with your friends and your family, and you want to send our children to a coding camp, uh, camp in Marvel speaks volumes for the mission and the vision that you have. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge the four students that are recipients. I'm so delighted that their families are with us, uh, tonight, one of whom, uh, the mom texts me right away, "Oh, my God, Ms. Gray, you have to know." I entered the Asbury Park School District, October 2014, and this young lady and her mom, I met them, they were the first, she was the first parent I actually interacted with, and I met her on a Sunday at CoWorks, right here in Asbury Park, a Sunday afternoon, and her daughter was there as an elementary school student, and she was busy, 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 engaged in this coding program that was being offered for free. So it is actually no surprise that she is one of the recipients. So congratulations to Jayani Murray. Also, one of our great debaters, Micah Wright. Eliot Tully. These are, these are also our debaters. Junea Whedon. This young lady spent her summer on the campus at Princeton University as part of the W. E. B. Du Bois Institute. And so again, it just, it just, it's not a surprise, but it is certainly a delight that you are representing us and that the Plum Coding, I mean, excuse me, that the Jersey Shore Women in Technology took time out to make sure that we could provide this additional opportunity to you and for you. So please, Board Madam President, if so, I'd like for us to now have them come forward and have some pictures. The owner from Plum Crazy Robotics and Coding, if you could join us, and certainly the ladies from the Jersey Shore Women in Technology Organization, please come forward, because we really want to take this moment, highlight you, celebrate you, and take some pictures with you, because we're so delighted, again, that you chose the Asbury Park School District and that you're choosing our students. Board members, if you would join us, thank you.
First of all, Ms. Kroposki, can you join us in the picture?
All right. So that, that takes care of our first presentation. Now we have our second presentation with the, by the audit review for, I mean, excuse me, with the audit review by Jerry Conati of Holman, Frenea, and Allison Accountants.
Jerry was unable to make it tonight, but I'm filling in for him. This can be a tough act to follow, that's, that's a great announcement. Uh, we just recently completed your audit report. There was a delay this year in all of the New Jersey school audit reports. The state has enacted a couple of different things where we need to record some of your pension costs. Those, those costs weren't available until two weeks ago, so that's why we're a little bit late. All of this, all of the, all the audits throughout the state were late this year, so that's, that's, that's why I'm here, usually I'm here in November, December, I'm a little late this year. Did you catch any of that? You could hear me? Okay. The reports were distributed this week. I don't know if you have them with you or not. It's a very big document. There's an awful lot of information in there. What I want to do is just give you a couple areas where I think you ought to take a look at, and there's actually two documents that we sent to you, which is what's called the CAFD, a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that's your financial report, that's prepared by your business office. Uh, we help, we help with some of the notes and things, but that is your document. And what we add to that, and the second document is the Auditor's Management Report, that's our report to the board. So you'll see, um, when, when you look at your reports, that there is two different reports, and that's what those are for. The thing that we add to your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is on page 13, and I don't know if you have it with you, but if you want to maybe write some of this down, we can, you can take a look at it at your leisure. The, uh, on page 13 is the Independent Auditor's Report, and there's basically two, there's basically three things that we look at. We look at a lot of things, but there's three goals when we come in to do an audit. We look at your internal controls, are there checks and balances to, to monitor the financial transactions that come through the district? We look at GAAP, which is Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. Are your financial statements presented in such a way that they can be compared not only to a school district in New Jersey, but a school district across the state? And also, we look at compliance. You, you have a lot of state, federal regulations that you need to get, deal with, and we make sure that you're in compliance with those. And what you received is called an unqualified opinion, that's the best opinion that you can get. That means your financial statements were reported correctly, your internal controls were working, and you complied with state and federal regulations. So that's, that's really the, the audit opinion that you're looking for. If there was one place I would spend some time, and you can get into these numbers, there's an awful lot of numbers in here, and an awful lot of information, and sometimes it'll, it'll boggle your mind, but, um, on page 19 is the Management Discussion and Analysis, and what this is, is a verbal overview of what happened financially. So if you get caught up in a lot of the numbers, if you read this letter, this is going to tell you, you know, where our revenues came from, what happened with fund balance, a lot of diff, a lot of good information. It's about four or five pages, and I would suggest that you try to read that. On page 97, 97 to 105 is really the meat of your report. This is your, your budgetary report, and what this is, is your original budget that was adopted, adjusted for any adjustments you may have made throughout the year. I know you make transfers throughout the year, and you approve those at board meetings, and, um, this, this will show you what you budgeted, what you received, what you spent. And I usually try to take a look at the transfers, if there's large transfers, that kind of question, uh, we budgeted for a certain amount, and we had to transfer either in or out, and why, why did those things happen? So that's something you might want to take a look at. This also talks about your fund balance. On page 105, your fund balance went up about $1.4 million from where we were last year. Last year, we were right about $10 million. This year, we're at 11, 11.5. 11.5 sounds like a lot of money, but there's things that start happening to that fund balance as soon as we get into the, the next year. We have to anticipate, we anticipated approximately $4.2 million to fund the 1920 budget, so that money's been spoken for. We have $613,000 in capital reserve, another $500,000 in maintenance reserve, so those items are set aside for, for some particular needs. We have an emergency reserve for unforeseen expenditures of about $650,000. And when we get all said and done, our unassigned or our real free fund balance is only $1.2 million. So on a, on a budget of $68 million, $1.2 million left is not, is not a whole lot. So, um, you know, $11 million sounds like a lot, but when we get it all down and we utilize it all, we're down to about $1.2 million. The other area I think you should spend some time with, if you like, is starts on page 201, and it runs for about 20, 30 pages, and it's called the statistical section, I always have a hard time with that word, statistical section, and that's a 10-year look back at a lot of different things within Asbury. It's about, looks at revenues, it looks at expenditures, you can see what our revenues were 10 years ago versus today, what our expenditures were 10 years ago versus today. It also looks at, at the debt within the community, it looks at the assessed valuations, it looks at tax rates, it looks at a lot of different things, and I think it's good when you're preparing the budget, kind of, to get a little history of where we were and where we, where we're going, and see changes in revenue, so I think that's a good place for you to see, um, what's, what's been going on over the last 10 years. And then the last section, which is our Auditor's, our Auditor's Management Report, that's our report to you, and that describes what we did within, within the audit, the things that we looked at, we looked at vouchers, we looked at payroll, there's a lot of different things that are in there, not everything's in there, but a lot, to give you a good idea of what we actually do. And this is also the area that if we have any problems, uh, we point them out. We had three findings this year, none of them were real major, I think they've all probably been corrected at this point, but, um, we found that there was about $40,000 of liabilities that weren't recorded at the end of the year. We do a, a search, like a, a search subsequent to the year end, we go and make sure that everything's been booked, and we found about $40,000 that was not booked, uh, so we did book that. We also found that, um, my bank reconciliations, when you balance your checking, checkbook at the end of the month, they weren't done for, um, I think it was about three months, for, yeah, from March through June, those reconciliations weren't completed when we got here. They were subsequently done, I, I believe we probably helped you out with those, but those, those were not being kept up to date. And we also found about $71,000 of outstanding checks that for whatever reason have not been cashed. We'd like to get that money back on the books, so we're suggesting that you go in, investigate those, why weren't they, why weren't they cashed? If they're, if they're good and they need to be re, reissued, we should do that, if not, we can cancel them, and that money will also go back into surplus. So that's just a quick idea of where you can spend some time looking at the report. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I want to thank Jeff and his staff, um, as always, very cooperative, and they did a nice job and made, made our work easy. If there's any questions that you have now, or any questions that come up after you've had a chance to review the report, um, please reach out to Jeff, and he and I will, we're in discussion, and we can, we can get you answers to those. Any questions, comments that I can answer at this point?
None from the board? Okay. But thank you very much.
We want to thank you very much for letting us do the work, and have a nice, have a nice evening. Did I leave that on? Thank you very much.
Madam Superintendent, your report, please.
Good evening. I'd like to make a few acknowledgements. First, um, I'll get into the attachments that you have in your agendas. Our enrollment, we are seeing an increase at the high school, very delighted that the high school is really, really, um, showing that they are the beacon of the district and the innovative programs that are there, uh, one example of which we just talked about with the Women in Technology, the Jersey Shore Women in Technology acknowledging our students there, but also our debaters, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So we're delighted that we are continuing to see an increase there. There are other variables where we're seeing dwindling enrollment, um, in some of our other schools. However, our attendance from last year to this year is up, and so it's up considerably in many cases, it's an increase of about 6% or more. And so what that says to us is that the students that are with us are coming frequently, and they're coming more frequently because, again, as I mentioned, we are an innovative district, there's a lot of innovative programming that's a result of what's been coming from Dr. Howard and her team, as well as Ms. Debbie Sylvia and Mr. Bramley, and the concerted efforts of the executive committee. So I'm very delighted to see that when our students, uh, that, that our students are coming in record-high numbers. We have the social and emotional addition, and what I often say is that social and emotional learning is not and social and emotional learning. Social and emotional learning is how we learn, and clearly, that's evidenced by the fact that students are coming into school. Oftentimes, we're seeing some of those percents reach as high as 90, almost 98%. And so it's, again, school is a place where students are running to, not running away from. So I want to commend the members of my team who are continuing to make sure, Principal Baumgartner establishing that culture of high expectations and making sure that it's a place that is meeting the needs of all of our students. When I say all of our students, three out of seven debates were won by our students when they were at Harvard. Harvard. And so when I say people and students are running to school, not running away from school, is evidenced by the fact that three out of seven of those debates were won by them, uh, won by Asbury Park School District students. And so totally worthy of acknowledgement and note, uh, some of those students are double-duty students in terms of being a recipient also for the coding and technology, uh, they're very visible and present in our community, and oftentimes are invited by the city council to address the city council and members of the community regarding some of their issues and concerns from their voice. So I'm very delighted to share that. Also, we had our mid-year convocation last month, first time ever, again, innovation, where our staff provided staff development for them, by them. It was wonderfully attended, and the feedback that was received was just, everyone was just delighted to be a part of this mid-year kind of reset, if you will, so that we can continue to provide very innovative, very energizing, uh, programming and experiences for our children. At that mid-year convocation, our administrators and some of our staff members were wearing Asbury Park School District sweatshirts, and I want to take this time to publicly acknowledge the Asbury Park Toy Drive for their wonderful donation of long-sleeved sweatshirts with our district logo. There's a lot to be said about school spirit, district pride, and clearly, there was a lot of pride that day in terms of being able to wear those donated, uh, sweatshirts. So I want to, again, say thank you to the Asbury Park Toy Drive for such a wonderful donation. Our Director of Operations, Ms. Buford, they, you know, Ms. Buford, things have to be done a certain way, and so she made sure the communication went, went out, because, uh, it became more like, okay, these are what's left, first come, first served. Those sweatshirts served as, um, as gifts, door prizes. Those sweatshirts served as, as gifts, door prizes, if you will, for some of our staff. And then those that we did not give away at that event, Ms. Buford sent out that lovely email, if you want one, we're not holding it, with your name on it, you better come quickly. And oh, boy, did they come. And to some of the staff's dismay, they missed them. But again, very thankful and delighted that we had those sweatshirts for a giveaway. So many thanks to the Asbury Park Toy Drive for that. Last but not least, I want to acknowledge, for the first time ever, ever, is the way the email came to me with ours afterward. First time ever in the Asbury Park High School history, we have a young lady, Black Girl Magic, I might add, third-place regionals, first fleet, first fleet female in the Asbury Park School District history to place third for the wrestling regional competition. Because that's so recent, that's an addenda item, so we are sending her off with well wishes and looking forward to the great accomplishment. But already, she has made history for our district. And so we will be acknowledging her at a later date. We just want to give her time to go on to the next level. That completes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy zero-one-six-seven. If you have a comment, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please tell us your name and your address. And remember, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Saran Davis, ten thirty-nine Summerfield Avenue. I am a product of this community. And I came last week and before I started, before I started, I was about to say, I donate fifty, I buy fifty pair of brand-new sneakers for kids before school start every year. That's what I do for my community. That's why it's so easy for me to get everybody to come out for me. I buy fifty pair of brand-new sneakers and fifty uniforms for kids every year. That's what I do. It's not what you have, it's not how much money you make, it's not what religion you believe in, it's about what you give and how you treat people. Because at any time, somebody's going to need somebody. And that's a promise. Last week, I've been dealing with this situation since last May when I got suspended. Last week, the guy says that the situation is still in litigations or I went to Perp. But Perp didn't knock on my door and hand me a non-renewal letter. Arbitration didn't knock on my door and say, you might not, you're not coming back. I don't know where it came from, there's so many fingers being pointed, I don't know who decided to make this decision. But if a lady like Dr. Howard, very highly respect, I respect her a lot, respect Director Jordan a lot, respect the Asbury Park Police Department a lot, all of them said no findings. And if we say non-renewal out of thirty-two securities and we bring thirty back and I'm not one of the ones that we bring back, this is crazy. This is ludicrous, man. This is ludicrous. Like I said, you can ask many questions, anything you want to ask me. I'm never been a liar, that's why I have so many friends. Friends are people that you rely on, friends are people that always come around because they depend on you. If I was a liar, I did something, I had no business, they wouldn't come around me and I wouldn't allow them to support me because I will never, ever put my mother on frontline to support me knowing that I'm lying. Never will I put my community on frontline knowing that I'm lying. That's what I don't do. You may think every young black man or however you, however y'all think about people from Asbury, man, that's the side of town I live on and that's the side of town I choose to live on. Because when things happen, I'm there. I got my little nephew right there, y'all don't even know him. Fifteen-year-old freshman, got shot in Steven Manners and paralyzed. I'm there. That's who there, my community there. That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about, man. It's not about what you think or what nobody say, man, deal with reality and deal with the truth. That's what life is about, about the truth. And there's one thing I'm leaving y'all with, and I hopefully, man, I know, Perp ain't got nothing to do with this. We are all grown-ups, we are all adults. We know when right is right and wrong is wrong. If you don't like me, I feel like it's personal. I feel, I honestly feel it's personal against me. I don't know why, but I feel like it's personal. But I'm telling, leave y'all a little quote, and I know the time is running out, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not sitting down until, until I read my quote. I'm, I'm, man, this, this is ludicrous, man, to give so much to a town for so many years, forty years, and to get treated like this? That's sad, man. That's very sad. And I don't know whose idea or who decision it is, but wrong is wrong. Because you know, I've been here for a long time, a very long time, and I'm not tenured. And I'm going to say this to you, if I was tenured, I wouldn't be here right now because I'd be working. But the sad thing is, people that's tenured could do what the hell they want. But the people that's not tenured, you treat them like crap. That's the saddest, man. That's crazy. And I'll tell you right now, man, to serve people takes dignity, dignity and intelligence. But remember, they're only people with money. Although we serve them, we are not their servants. We do, we does, what, what we do does not define who we are. What defines us is how well we rise after they think they gonna make you fall.
Good evening, Asbury. Kaya Wheaton, twelve oh six Third Avenue, right down the street, also thirteen oh nine Summerfield. And on behalf of this community, I would like to just say, education is a process. You don't come in school and just know everything right from the beginning. You make mistakes, you learn from those mistakes, you correct those mistakes, you aren't, you learn the right answers, then you hold on to the right answers. Now, what's being done, in my opinion, there was a mistake made by not bringing this gentleman back to work. Everybody on this panel I've seen before, and I hold, I'm high-regarding all of you in terms of your level of intelligence, your sincere concern for our children, but we got a problem wrong here. We made a mistake. And y'all intelligent enough, y'all care enough to right this wrong. It's a mistake. Let's correct this mistake. Because the community, the school district is built of three or four different components. And one of those components is the community. And that gentleman ain't nothing but community. He's nothing but community. So with that being said, the Asbury Park School District is going to be losing a significant component to this equation on being successful and our children being successful. I'm telling you here now, as God is my witness, we're removing one of God's angels out of this equation. I know this man all his life. I went to bat for him, I go back-to-back with him. We don't always agree, but what I do know is, he is what's right about Asbury, he is what's right about the Asbury Park School District, and we can fix this. We can fix this. Every last one of y'all that's in this room, we can fix it. He may not come back as a security guard, let's create a position. But let's right this wrong, let's fix this. Let's get this A on this test as opposed to getting this D or this F on this test, y'all. Because right now, the district is failing our community right now in terms of losing this individual. This ain't about my opinion. I represent the children of Asbury Park School District, I represent the children of Asbury Park. He's a product of it. He's a star pupil of it. He's someone you can put on any stage in any environment and he's going to shine for you all. I guarantee you, it's my word, he will shine for you all. Thank you.
Good evening. Alan Boom, three eleven Seventh Avenue, Asbury Park. I just want to say, I'm here to represent for a great person. This individual is a pillar of our community. I heard the young lady say about the lady wrestler, young lady wrestler, the first time ever, she was excited. If I show a hand, did anyone read that pamphlet from last month? Nobody? That was handed out. So if you would have read it from front to back, you would have saw what this man represents, integrity, dedication, love, commitment. And you would have said, this guy belongs back to work. He's been doing this for so many years. It's like behind me, from kids to grown people to elderly people. And you have to have a kind heart to say, there's no way possible, no way possible, this man shouldn't be where he belongs because all he does is good. And I don't think there's one person in this room that will say that this man has ever done anything wrong. All he does is make you laugh, smile, you know what I mean? He's a affectionate person, but he's also dedicated. And when you have dedication, like y'all dedicated because you are the board, so you have to be dedicated to the kids. He's a security guard and he's more dedicated than teachers. I can put my hand up to that, I guarantee it. That's my brother and I'm going to represent him, but right is right and wrong is wrong. And I don't get into the politics of things. I'm just saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, we have to do the right thing. That's all I'm saying. And if you would have read the pamphlet, you would have been saying the same thing, you know? This guy was a hometown hero. Hometown hero for what he's done for our community. This A we represent in our blood. A lot of y'all might not live around here, but we're from here. Blood, sweat and tears. We on the outside looking in, but we know the truth about this man and we're not going to all come out here and say this to you, month after month after month after month. No way possible. He deserves fair justice and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hello? My name is Leslie Banks. I'm fourth avenue at Asbury Park. I have two kids at third good, one in the first grade, one in the second grade. Never, when Mr. Davis was there, I had to worry about my kids in school. He made sure they got to class. If I'm standing outside waiting for them, he made sure he hold their hand and run them out to me. And I agree with that gentleman, he cared for those kids more than some teachers. My daughter came home and told me the teacher been plucking her in the head. I don't see her standing up here asking for her job. She's, my daughter still had to go to her class. Why is that? Can anybody tell me? Yes, a moment of silence now. My kids every day come home and ask why Mr. Davis not back in school, why didn't they see Mr. Davis today? So I agree with everybody, that man did nothing but good and still doing good for the community and third good marshal. Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Banks, Britt, New Jersey, from here, Asbury Park. I just want to say, that's my aunt. And prior to this, I got a phone call on my phone. She screaming, asking me where Mr. Davis at. I had no idea. She screamed, her daughter ran out of school. I live all the way in Britt. She called and said, Karen, find Mr. Davis. My daughter ran out the building, where's he at? I don't even, didn't even know what was going on. So I had to find out. So what hurts is to know somebody's calling you from Monmouth County to Ocean County because of the safety of their daughter, from one individual person. The sad part about it is, we can always put the blame on everything, but nobody ever stands up and says the fact, I apologize, I was wrong. It's not, I don't understand, there's nothing wrong with being wrong. Apologize face up to it, move on. We're all adults. This young man, as he said each and every day for years, donates to kids out of his own pocket, as hard as he works. But just like I said up here and I said, I didn't know anything until I got that phone call about this little girl who was looking for Mr. Davis. So it hurts to know that somebody will call another county asking for somebody that lives in their county in a school system with their kids. So all is, all is, all is all, fair is fair. This young man is more than the community, he's the community. He grew up here, he's still here and he stills not, he's not going anywhere whether or not, whatever choice y'all make, because he's from here. And that's why I came back here, because when she called me and left the message, I made my business to come back and find out where he was at, just to let her know that he's going to return because that's where he belongs. Now, that's all we're asking for, is a fair chance. He's, there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong. And that's the problem we have today, because we can't accept the fact when we're wrong. Everybody want to cover everything up and hide, no, whatever. But he deserves to have his job and he deserves to rate all, raise all his kids. Because see, he might be securing them in those buildings, but those are his children. So when every mother and father leaves their kids there, they don't left them with their foster father, who's going to make sure they get to and from to where they have to. So not only is he's taking the job up for parents, parents know that they're fine and you just seen that here with this young lady right here. There's no more I can say, I've been in this young man's life since he was seven years old. Seven years old. And I have to honestly say, as a woman of watching him grow up from seven to a grown man now, he's one hell of a man. And I would always make sure all my kids is around here because that's who you need. So I'm telling you, don't let him go down the road because that would be the worst thing you can ever do for Asbury. Saran Davis is not number one, he's all. So get him in, y'all.
Members of the board, before we continue with, with the public comment, we're all listening to very impassioned, compassionate and heartfelt thoughts, but I'll remind everybody that this matter is in litigation. So I would, I would urge you to consider refraining from making any comments on it, but I certainly think that it's important for all members of the board to hear each and every person that comes tonight and, and have their, you know, their ability to express their thoughts and opinions to the board.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say before you start the clock, that Quajenee will be competing in Atlantic City for the state championship in wrestling on March first and March second. And I will be there, I've already booked my room. So please, anyone that can make it to support her, it would be greatly appreciated. Where, where am I staying? Oh, it's at the convention center, at the old convention center, not the new one. The new one is attached to the Sheraton, not that one, but the, the dome-shaped one, on the boardwalk, yeah, that one. Okay, so I, I got up because I would be remiss if I did not speak on behalf of Mr. Davis before I left. He is one of the first people I met when I started here in Asbury Park sixteen years ago. And I heard about him before I met him because there was an article in the paper about how he was volunteering and coaching for the football, the young football players. So that's one of the first experiences I've had with him and he has been consistent with dedicating himself to the students of Asbury Park since I've known him. This, what I really wanted to say is that this board and this administration has gone out of their way to make sure that the right people are in place and that our students are exposed to the right people that are effectively changing their lives. You have done an amazing job at that. One of those things you've done is by putting me at the high school. And you have placed the right people in the right places to affect our students and that's why the changes that are happening are happening. So what I want to say is that he is one of those right people. And I can tell you that, I don't know what happened, you don't know what happened, but what I can tell you is if you want to continue putting the right people in the right places to effectively change students, he is one of those people. Thank you.
Tessa. Marcus Blackman, Sunset Avenue. I actually wasn't going to get up here and speak and all, but I heard the same thing twice since I've been here. I'm not going to speak for the young man on how good he is and what he does and what he doesn't do. The community speaks for itself, his work speaks for itself. But what I can speak on is what the board has said already. I heard twice that you guys said it's an arbitration. Now, in my opinion, of course, I've been a union member for years, that's saying that you guys have given up. Because what I've understood from arbitration is that you guys have the authority slash the power to at least recommend. And you can recommend. You could say, I recommend that just come back to whoever. I recommend that we revisit. I recommend that we look at it again. Instead, you put him on RIF. That states values, or speaks values, about where you guys stand at. People had come up here and spoke of his valor, spoke of his talent, spoke of his gifts, spoke that he gave back to the community. And it's, to me, in my opinion, like I said, it seems to have fallen on deaf ears. Once again, when you say it's an arbitration, you have given up. That's my honest opinion, I feel strongly about that. If you want to be right or wrong, right the wrong. Don't look for excuses. Don't reach for something that's not there. Don't scratch where you don't itch. Say, I was wrong, let's bring it back, let's revisit it, let's look at it again. And start this process over. There's nothing wrong with that. We're all human, we all make mistakes. I'm not saying that you guys wrong, but don't give up on it. Don't give us that, that stance when you say, I can't do anything because that's totally false. That's a false statement, and I feel strongly about that. That's all I have to say.
Here I am again, and I will be coming and coming and coming until we rebuild, retool, and restore my son back to where he is. You've been in litigation for so long, you keep saying litigation, litigation, while you're putting my son's light on hold. You sit here, you appoint different people for different things, high amounts of money and everything, but yet it's still, this is a community. We are a community. We bind together, we stick together, and we go out for each other. And me being a mother, when someone is wrong, if you know me, I'll say you wrong. I'll let you know you wrong, but I'll stand behind you all the way. But I'll let you know that you're wrong. And you're wrong for what you're doing to my son. You're hiring people, but you're neglecting him that's been here, born here, bred here, as we say in North Carolina, born and bred here in Asbury Park, on the west side of town. He does not have to be here, but he chooses to be here. I don't know what happened. Really don't care what happened. But I do care about my son. And you sit up there, and I'm just going to say it, because see, I have nothing to lose. You can give me my papers, whatever you want to do, because I have nothing to lose. You sit there on your high horses, like you're all dead, looking down on him all strange, litigation, litigation. I'm so tired of litigation. What is he supposed to do while you're in litigation? What is he supposed to do? And I'm tired of you saying litigation. But I, I come to tell you tonight, I'm an elder in the church, and I'm prophesying over you tonight. If you don't do right by my son, watch the house of cards begin to fall.
Greetings, greetings and good evening, everyone, Asbury Park. Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak here tonight. And here, tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of Ashan. And I just want to say that nonetheless, you see the amount of people in the room. I don't really need to even say much about what, the volume of what this man and this man's work has done in the community, and I'm giving it to you directly. I'm an Asbury Park alumni, class 2015. And he, he was a part of the coaching staff that I participated in on the football team. And, and I can tell you that, just like the principal of the high school has said, y'all have done a great job, and I just want to thank y'all for allowing, allowing the people inside of this district to be inside this district. So that young men and young women like me can meet people like Ashan. Because in those, in those moments where we meet those instrumental, fundamental people in our lives to really evoke the greatness, the passion, the, the potential of an individual, specifically me, it goes beyond sports, it goes beyond what this man has done inside of the, the school district, but who he is as a pillar inside of the community. And I'm giving you this as someone who overlooks the, the babies in the elementary school, from the middle school to the high school, that this name, this man's name rings bells inside of the community. And I stand here on behalf of someone who supports the community and supports their decisions, and everyone who stood on this podium today to say, just reconsider. Everyone deserves a second chance, and think about the mistakes that you've made in your life. Think about the decisions that you've made, and maybe just begin to reconsider. I understand that this process is in litigation. But how can we expedite this process? Put yourself for a moment in this man's shoes. Just for a second, all right? So thank you very much, Asbury Park, and y'all have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Is there anyone else for public participation? This will now close that section.
Michael Byer. I work for the Board of Education, I work here at Bradley. I live in Lakewood, quiet as kept. But my message is really not for the Board of Education. My message is for the people out in the audience. This is your community. This is your community. You, Asbury is the most friendliest, open arms place that you could possibly be. If you want things to change, change it. All these faces can change. Start being a part, start coming out. You know, when it's election times, vote. Change the faces. Because if you really want to get heard, that's how you do it. You begin to change the faces. Mr. Davis, I mean, I have, I didn't grow up with Mr. Davis. I didn't go to school with Mr. Davis. I met Mr. Davis when I came here. If I could have another brother, it would be Mr. Davis. The things that I have learned from him, all the kids that I have met, everybody says, how do you know the kids? How do you act like that with the kids? Is really because of him. I've been to kids' homes. You know, when your kid doesn't want to go to school, and your parents already went to school, we go get him. Mr. Davis. A little girl got hit by a car, ended up in the hospital. Mr. Davis says, let's go to the hospital, let's go bring flowers. This man just has an enormous heart, you know. I just feel like I have to get up here and say something for him because he's not just the person I work with, he became my brother, you know. You know how you know somebody's your brother? Because when they get up and they talk, and, and you can feel their pain. If you can feel his pain, that's, that's your brother, and that's my brother. I mean, I love him, I love him to death. Like I said, man, if, if you want to change your community, change it. Stop letting people come in here and change it for you, change it. Get out. If you want to get elected, run. You don't, these faces will change. Change them, period.
As I have said at last month's board meeting, we're sitting here, all of us, and we're listening to you. There's nothing that we can say to you. It's not that we don't care, or we don't feel. We are limited in what we can say. So the only thing that we can do is listen to you. And I want you to understand that. And when we say that it's in our counsel, that it's in litigation, that's where it is. And some things we just can't do. And yeah, you can, you know, when it's election time, you can vote and change the faces. That's your prerogative. But that person who will sit here or there will still listen to you and not be able to say anything. No matter how many times you come. And again, it's not that we don't care. And it's not that we don't feel. That ends public participation. Dr. Howard, you have the monthly HIB report.
It is in your bomb packet, it's on page 88. And if you look at the HIB report, the month of January, there were five reported, and there were two determinations of a HIB. The two determinations of the HIBs were verbal and physical, and the action that was taken by the district was student counseling and one for an in-school suspension. That concludes the HIB report.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. State monitor, I will wait until the room is quiet before you deliver your report. State monitor, you have a report.
I'd just like to inform the board that I have met twice in Trenton regarding our budget and the number of decisions the board is going to have to make, not just this year, but in the years to come. Looking at the total amount that is projected to be cut, it's, as Dominic has said, simply not a one-year problem. So it is, it does transcend one year. And I also met last Saturday with the superintendent of Tom's River, who is a part of the suit against the state and against the formula to make certain that I understood the, the lawsuit. Not that we are intending to participate in it, but we will. Adam and I were talking before, and it's a fact that whatever decision would be made in that lawsuit would apply to all districts in the state of New Jersey. In other words, you don't have to be in it in order to profit from it if a decision is made and the formula is changed, or they make a determination for any reason that it is, you know, flies in the face of thorough and efficient or any legal basis for it. If it changes, we will all, every district will have to be revisited, and it has to be looked at. They do have about eight, seven or eight schools. They aren't, with Dominic, I think it was mentioned before, maybe it was Barbara. It's, I think it was Barbara. It's not simply an urban issue. It's not what was formerly Abbott District issue. It's an issue for the entire state. And whatever happens with that lawsuit will apply to the entire state. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I will keep the board informed. Most of my contact, contacts in Trenton right now are as a result of, of trying to, to make certain that we understand the impact, to understand what the, the downside of it is and, you know, what our, our position would be if we were to have to really experience $24 million of cuts over the next few years. Obviously, very, very serious issues would be presented to the district. So we are under our fair share, which is true of also the districts that are in, right now, in the lawsuit. So it's not just a, a question of, of those like some of the others that wanted this law to begin with. They are over their fair share, and that's why they were pushing to have this kind of a, a formula used for, for the future.
I just want to, if you could confirm for me, the formula, one of the reasons they filed this lawsuit is that the formula, even through Oprah, they cannot get the formula from anybody. Nobody will actually present the formula that, that led to the decision, who gets what funding.
That is correct. That's what he did share with me. And what was the impetus to go forward. I believe that one of the first things in the lawsuit is for the state to produce how it determined the amounts in each district. You're right, Barbara.
Acceptance of minutes, Mr. Hastings?
Yes, could we have a motion on A1 for number 10, and on A2 for number 11, the calendar?
I'll move it.
This is for A1, the minutes, and A2, the calendar. Ms. Lozinski?
I'm going to abstain from the January 24th minutes, vote yes on the 3rd, and yes on the count.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney? Ms. Breach? Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraka? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Athien? January meetings?
Yes, abstaining on January 23rd.
Thank you. And Ms. Abes Anderson? Motion carries.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to request, board, that we have a consent agenda for our pages B1 to B11.
I'll move it.
Second question. Any question?
So all items B1 to B11, Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, on all items, abstain from B11, number 7.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Breach?
Yes, abstaining on B7, 8, and B8, 19.
Ms. Lotaraka? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Athien?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items, C1, number 1 through C5, number 11?
Move. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Athien? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Breach?
Yes, abstain on C3D.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraka? Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Pinkney? Ms. Abes Anderson? Thank you, all items carry.
Motion to adjourn. Cool.